All right, welcome to our 5 o'clock board meeting. Right? We have a lot on the agenda tonight. For those that are here for the marijuana public hearing, it will start promptly at 7:00. Okay? It's not going to start earlier, it's not going to start later, it's going to start promptly at 7:00. If you have public comment in regard to that, please hold that till we get to the public hearing. Right? We have a lot of business we want to get through between now and then, so we're going to get rocking and rolling here, all right? So with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda, public comment. Can you raise your hand first? Okay, so again, please keep them to three minutes or less, and go to the podium. Marie, state your name and let's report.
My name is Marie Trombini. At the September board meeting, Mayor Bassett read what he later described to me as private notes indicating that the village attorneys had researched in 2020 the legal status of the northern portion of Prospect Street, and based on their research, the mayor declared that the northern portion of Prospect Street was a private road. This decision was made in private without an opportunity for public comment or debate, ignoring the legal process for abandonment of a public street. I believe in due process and open public discussion. To this end, I would like to put in tonight's public record the following excerpts from the Village of Rhinebeck Board of Trustees meeting minutes. Village Board meeting notes from 1976 that approved installation of a water hydrant and new water lines on the northern portion of Prospect Street. No easement was given for this public service as the street is a public street. Three separate 1985 board meetings referencing oil installing Prospect Street as part of the regular village budget and that the work has been completed. There are no meeting minutes for public discussion where this was removed from the village budget. A 2002 board meeting that stated and approved that the entire length of Prospect Street is public and will remain public. To me, this in particular laid out the legal status of Prospect Street for the future and confirmed the public's rights to Prospect Street. Additionally, in 2020, I received an email from the village zoning officer stating that Prospect Street is a village road and can be used by the public, affirming that this would be noted and recorded. Everything I witnessed, know, and researched confirms the entirety of Prospect Street as a public street, including decades worth of public service by the village and used by the general public. Yet this status was changed in secret without public notification or debate. This secrecy adversely affects the majority of properties that border onto Prospect Street. It affects access and property values. I also understand that when obtaining financing for a home, if a property is on private property, as is now the case due to the actions of the village board and village attorney and perhaps planning board, Prospect Street residents who attempt to obtain financing for a home mortgage will only qualify when a maintenance agreement is in place. The board, oh, well, it also affects residents' ability to subdivide their properties and apply for building permits. The board has denied them access without any public discussion. This extensive and improper rework has changed the street's legal status and character of the neighborhood, and I ask that the street be restored to its former, more environmentally pleasing condition. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Edie Scherer, and I live at 21 West Chestnut Street. This is also about the issue that Marie is discussing. So I just want to make a comment about the recent decision. This is more about quality of life, and I just appreciate that Marie did so much research because that I have not done. I'd like to comment about the recent decision made by the Village of Rhinebeck to allow residents of 17 Prospect Street to declare a portion of Prospect Street a private road and to build obstructive curves to keep residents from using what used to be a public road. This decision was taken without consideration of the adjacent properties in mind. There are structures built against my property line that were not approved by me, and they directly affect the use of my property. For 23 years, I had access to my property through Prospect Street Gate. I have a flag lot, and I have a map of it if you want to see it. I'll pass it. It's rough, but that's the gate right there. And there's now a curb built there. 23 years before Hagberg and Rosenberg lived in that property, I had access to my property through the Prospect Street Gate if I needed large equipment and maintenance improvements. I have over 200 feet of property facing the road and the flag lot. And contrary to Rosenberg and Hagberg's belief, there is no other access to my property since the West Chestnut Street side of my property is too narrow and it is included. Rosenberg and Hagberg, Rosenberg and Hagberg have drastically affected the quality of life of our street. Years ago, before they asserted exclusive ownership of the road, children rode their bikes and played on that safe street that runs along our property. I trimmed the bushes with Marie's mother, Jenny Trombini Goodwill, and she kept the debris swept up so the kids wouldn't fall on the gravel. But now the neighborliness and cooperation is gone. Rosenberg and Hagberg, Rosenberg and Hagberg have erected a 21st century equivalent of a 19th century spite fence with money, time on their hands, lawyers, and hubris. Not only does this prevent me from accessing services of the village, but it takes away any hope I might have to subdivide and develop my property. You may ask why I didn't know that all this was going on in the past year. Well, mea culpa, I did not know. I'm a social worker for Kingston City School District. I provide mental health services, crisis intervention, staff support, and many other services to families in need. The fights that I've been engaged in are for social justice, parity and provision of medical services, food and housing insecurity, digital equality, and equal access for newly arrived immigrants. But the residents of 17 Prospect Street appear to believe that because I have not yet engaged in a challenge to them, that I have relinquished my rights and that there's some fight in me. But as we have learned in many political situations, the only way to take away the power of a bully is to stand up to them. So I'm calling on the Village of Rhinebeck to restore the quality of life and access to our neighborhood, to restore the broad access of my property via Prospect Street. I call on the village to use broad home rule powers to make sure that residents who have money, time, and hubris cannot unilaterally make decisions that do harm to hardworking people like me who do not have the means to engage in an equal fight. Thank you.
Do you want this back? Do you want this back? Very great, thank you.
Linda.
Linda Christensen, 37 South Street. I actually have a question. I don't know if that's allowed during comments, but the question is, for the 6 Mulberry Street work session that you're going to be setting tonight, is there going to be public comments allowed?
That's exactly what the 6 Mulberry Street work session will be. It will be a public comment.
Oh, okay, it's not a work session just for the board that we can observe?
No.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Seeing none, we're going to move on. Next, we have a presentation by Mike Fraser, a Village of Rhinebeck historian, and a brief introduction of this is recently the discovery of the original gates on Astor Road.
Thank you, Mayor Ressler. Yeah, what I'm proposing to the trustees this evening is that the village accept these original gates that at one time until Brooke Astor sold property between the current entrance to Astor Drive, much of it to eight acres, then all the way in from upper Montgomery Street all the way to the river was property of the Astor family. In 1959, Vincent Astor passed away, his wife Brooke Astor sold property at that time. Astor Drive became a public road, and the gates that stood right there at the upper Montgomery Street entrance to what was Ferncliff got taken down, and they have for about, what is that, about 60 years now, been sitting in a barn at 176 River Road. The most recent owners of 176 River Road, the Verilli family, sold that property a couple weeks ago. I met at the invitation of the Verilli family, Nancy Kelly, with Matt and Stuart Verilli, two young men who with another brother owned that property, did own that property, were eager to see those gates returned to their original site. They are willing to donate those gates to the Village of Rhinebeck. As the village historian, I can't think of a more impressive donation. It is an important part of our history. Those gates, taken down around 1960, probably date, not certain about this, but were probably made in the late 1800s. There was an article about them in a Gazette from the 1920s, so we know they're at least 100 years old, most likely quite a bit older than that. They are heavy-duty wrought iron. I don't know if they weigh a ton, but probably close to it. They stand at their tall end, which is in the middle when the gates are closed, at six feet. At their shorter end, they're a little under five feet. They are 154 inches wide. The entrance to Astor Drive today is more than 154 inches wide. I tried to figure out why that was the case when I told my colleagues at the Rhinebeck Rotary Club that I would be recommending the acceptance of these gates, but that there was this one mystery. One of my fellow members of the Rotary Club is Mike Mazzarella. Mike, soon after that property became public between Montgomery Street and further down to River Road, had purchased, he and Sally purchased one of those pieces of property. They had a couple of young children. Mike was very concerned that in order for his sons to easily get to school, that entrance, as it stood at 150-some inches, wasn't wide enough for a school bus to go through. So I don't know who he persuaded to widen those gates, but those gates are, those pillars, stone pillars, even though they still have the hardware that supported the gates, are now over 200 inches, and the village, I guess, are the ones that moved them. The tail end of this story, by the way, is that the school buses never did decide to use Astor Drive. What the Mazzarella kids had to do was to take a shortcut through the Verilli property at 176 River Road because the school buses continued to run only under the road. But to come back to the reason that I'm here before you, I think those gates are an important part of our village history. For the village to accept them, there are some issues. It's not a simple donation. There would be some expense involved initially. I have an estimate of $2,650 to sandblast, paint, and some other work that needs to be done on the gates, but they are in incredibly good condition for the amount of time that they've been standing in the weather. The other issue is what about longer-term maintenance costs? They may periodically need some occasional painting or other work. I doubt very much, but there would be some expense involved, some responsibility on the part of the community. The other question is, can we, as a village, actually mount them where they were originally? Originally, they closed off Astor Drive. Well, that is a public road, we don't want that to be happening. The other reason we don't want them in that location is that those two upper and lower brackets that are still there on either of those pillars are frankly an obstruction. And while they haven't been removed, I guess out of deference to maintaining our history, snowplows have struck those pillars. Those pillars are actually on private property. The one on the north side is on property belonging to that, this church. The one on the south side is on property belonging to the Woods Homeowners Association. And so part of the rationale for my recommending that they not be mounted there is that that would require consent of the homeowners and complicate any problems down the line if there were any unfortunate accidents with somebody striking the stone pillars. My recommendation would be that metal posts be sunk into the ground just slightly in front of the existing stone pillars, in front of, I mean, on the east side facing upper Montgomery Street, and that the five-foot short end of the gates be mounted there and that the taller six-foot end be sunk into the ground in a manner that, so that they come open almost to the stone walls and be secured there so that only village staff could open them. So I do have to share with the trustees that estimate. I think there may be enough copies, I don't think those matter. So the bottom line and my recommendation is that the trustees accept these gates, be glad to answer any questions anybody can have.
Are these kind people who have held these gates in their garage for a very long time? Are they willing to donate the $2,600 in addition to the gates?
My understanding.
Okay. Thanks.
Matt Verilli?
So the question becomes the property owners having given approval to mount the gates. That is one of the other questions. It'd be a shame to purchase them and not have approval to put the gates on that property.
The gates, the way I'm recommending it, the gates would be entirely on village property. It's village property that is adjacent to private property, but if Douglas County parcel access is accurate in defining those property boundaries, the land on which these gates would stand would be village property. It would be in a, there's a slight green area on the east side of the stone walls, and the stone walls themselves at most are right on the boundary.
So everything between the stone wall and Astor and Montgomery is owned by the village, is what you're saying?
Everything on the east side of the stone walls is within the right-of-way of Montgomery Street. Yes, that's correct, or the right-of-way of Astor Drive. Yes. The pillars are within private property, they're inside those boundaries.
Are we already doing any maintenance in that area in terms of weed whacking? And I'm just thinking, are we going to have vines growing up these beautiful gates? And what sort of maintenance would we plan to do?
I think, my personal opinion is, I think that we should definitely accept the gift of the gates, but whether we hang them there or they become a display or something, or get integrated into another, to something around the village, not something around the village, but a little taller at the library, might be a better way to go. We should really, I think, take a look at the engineering and thinking about, yes, these need to be painted and maintained and weed whacked. We have had, unfortunately, a snowplow hit one of those pillars, and would these gates be liable to be hit by something else? And so I think we should definitely, you know, accept the gates, but we should take a little bit more time to think about, should they be there or should they be on a display somewhere or somewhere else we could put them? Because I do think people should see them, and I do think they are important, but I'm just concerned about that location.
And to answer your question, we are not doing maintenance there. It's already, it's being maintained by the property owners.
Property owners.
Yes. So whether that would continue or not would be under discussion because it's even gracious enough to keep that area maintained. So it's not grown in wild grass.
I'm guessing that this is time-sensitive, given that the property has been sold? And is this a time-sensitive request, given that the property has been sold and that these gates are sitting in a garage that now no one?
The owners of the gates have told me that they have been given until December 31st by the new owners of the property to remove them from the property.
I think, oh, I'm sorry.
I agree with Rick. I think 100 years from now, no one would say, wow, why did we accept these gates? My gosh, this is amazing. What, I mean, if it's okay, I mean, if you're worried about what purpose we use it as now, but if we can figure out what to use it for, and you don't mind, in other words, if we don't, does the donor want us to attach them to those pillars right now, or can we sort it out?
The answer is yes.
You do?
Yes.
I think it is the opinion, I'm sorry, I think it is the opinion of our historian that they be mounted where they are and not in another location.
Right.
Okay.
And that's also the opinion of me and my brothers who are willing to donate those as well.
Okay, so the donation is contingent on them being mounted in that particular location?
Open to considering, we are open to considering other possibilities, but that's the intention of the donation, to mount them where they were historically mounted and where they had historic significance as the entrance to the Astor State.
Look, I think it's a great idea, I just think we need to really go through the practicality of, will it work up there? That's my only question.
I'm happy also to address the concerns that I've heard you mention already and the others that you, my daughter and I have ideas about how to solve some of those issues as well. For metal layers and the, they fall down, the gates in a way that addresses a lot of concerns that have been raised.
So I'd like to make a motion, keep things moving. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the village gates and we accept the responsibility to get them restored for the $2,650, and then as a result of that, we spend until, no later than the next meeting, to decide location. Okay? Do I have a second?
Keeping in mind that if the location is not in the original historic location, then the donation may be rescinded.
Properly accepted, yes. Okay? And that if we don't accept that location amendment?
Yeah.
Got it?
These wouldn't probably go up until the springtime anyway, if they're definitely clean.
It's possible. I mean, I don't know how long it takes to do this restoration, but let's get back up. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lydia. Now discussion.
Yeah, I think we can figure out in the next two weeks. If you're willing to engage in this conversation, you know, great, then that makes sense to me, and I think sort of taking a donation of this magnitude is, I mean, sort of remarkable. And I think the least that we can do is spend $2,600 on it, although of course I'm always hoping that we don't have to. But yeah, I think it makes sense. Thank you very much. That's very kind of you.
It'd be nice to put a plaque there, some sign of sign, so if somebody walks by, they say, these are the original gates, so people know. You know, I think that should be part of the, if these wind up there. And I'm only concerned about practicality, as an aesthetic and as the other ideas, I think it's great, I'm just concerned about practicality, that's mine.
So I think you should go look.
Right.
We should all go look, picture it. I believe you sent me a picture, I can circulate that to the board, but if you wanted to have a better picture, to circulate to the board, that would be great.
Yeah, I think we may want to update those renderings. Those renderings were prepared.
It's a progress.
And that way they could visualize where they are. Okay?
So when is the next board meeting?
Fourth Tuesday of the month.
I think if Matt.
26th, October 26th.
I think you had something else you wanted to add?
I was trying to thought about, you know, the $2,600 for restoring and installing the gates, that's an estimate that we came up with that's low by normal standards, I don't know if anybody recognizes that, but we can, we're still willing to work with the village on getting those cars restored, that's, that much is prohibitive.
So Matt, we accepted the responsibility of the $2,650 to get them restored.
The 26 is to, it's installed, that's to fabricate, that's cleaned.
That's cleaned and installation.
Installed, new hardware, new posts installed, that's 26 is installed.
It's assumed that the village would perform. The above estimate does not include excavation or pouring of concrete footings in the gate posts, as it assumed the village could perform that work.
Right, but it's got the sports, the fabrication.
Yeah.
Also to address the, you know, the plows and how to get the pillars in the past, the
idea that we're proposing is to mount these gates on metal posts that are independent of the stone pillars, and they, they wouldn't stick out into the current opening. The road restricts the roadway any more than currently is. The posts would be in front of the stone pillars, and they could be very strong, beefy, four-by-four square steel posts along with these dates, which are very substantial, have metal gates in themselves, so as far as the plows, damage from the plows accidentally hitting them, the posts and the gates could actually, would actually stand up better than the stone pillars to that.
Have you guys seen the picture disposed of?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
And what is the?
Another thing, if I could, if we were thinking of a possibility of vandalism or, you know, people getting the wrong idea of when the gates closed, we can, we can fabricate locking systems so that that can't happen only to village staff who be able to remove the gates.
All right, any other questions on the board?
Just one quick question. What is the length of each gate individually?
76 and a half inches each half, so what is that, 153 inches gives the horizontal span.
12 feet, approximately, 12 feet, a little.
Which is less than the current distance between the doors, maybe the, in line.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to.
Sorry, just one final comment, that even though we're not proposing putting them on private property, we nevertheless think it's important that we consult with those property owners and address any objections they might have.
Yeah, real parcel access is a tax map, and it's not always.
I understand.
Have integrity with service.
Yeah.
All right, so I made a motion to accept and then make a decision on placement at our next meeting. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you very much. Before we move on, one more thing.
Before we move on, one more thing is, because before I came here, I completed a written history of Astor Drive that I, you know, was invited in the, in the, in the area, hoping that this could be shared with all of you as well, sort of backgrounds in the history of Astor Drive and also all of the road improvements that the Astors did in my time over the years as a sort of a backside to the Astor Drive story.
So Matt, I'd like to thank you for reaching out and making us available to the village. I think that's just absolutely wonderful.
I was going to, thank you.
Okay, next on agenda, the fire company has, I've met with the fire company, and both Karen and I have met, and the fire company is making the proposal to purchase the ambulance based on donations they've received. There is no action for us to take. Rhinebeck Inc. is going to do the purchase of the fire company through donations. So thank you, Rhinebeck Inc. Next, there was a late ad that's not on your agenda, and I'll speak to it briefly. I think it's be rather, I'm going to turn the floor over to Trustee Lewitt. But today we received the insurance buyout for our trucks that burnt in the fire on September 25th, I think it was, the date. So we had a meeting today with Trustee Lewitt, Scott Minn, Karen, and myself. And with that, Trustee Lewitt wants to make a proposal.
Okay, so the insurance adjusters came and they looked at each truck. And I don't have the exact figures.
Truck eight is the 2010. It would be $110,800. Truck five is a 2012 for $114,300.
That's what they're willing to give us?
That's the insurance buyout.
That's the insurance buyout.
Insurance has approved that already.
Wow. Is that a lot?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, like, I don't know how much these trucks cost.
They are expensive. They are quite expensive.
Yeah.
This is, I think, a very good offer from the insurance agency. We can, the one truck that did not completely melt, we can actually take the radios and there are some other parts that we can salvage from it, which we'll take. They just want the trucks stripped down. I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea that we accept this, but I think that the price is right. We would put the money, that money into the capital account for the highway capital account. And then we could use that to spend on two new trucks as we see fit. And we are actively pursuing new vehicles.
Okay. Is there any?
A new truck is greater than $100,000.
Yeah, I would imagine, yeah. By how much?
Depends, I mean, you know what truck we end up with. But it could be, it could be possible, given the discussions we had today, that we could purchase an equivalent sized truck and a five-yard truck, four to five-yard truck with, could be used for grinding, could be used for small mall purposes, could be used for plowing village roads and everything. It is conceivable, but not confirmed, that we could purchase two trucks with the insurance funds that we have. But not, I'm not, we don't have.
We have no idea. And inventory is weird these days.
Yeah, there's a lead time issue with.
Well, right now, we're working on two trucks that are in stock, potentially in stock that are on state bid, to see if we can, see if we can get them. Because it is a year plus to purchase a new truck today. And the problem we're trying to solve is, we do not have enough trucks to plow the roads through the winter. We have a loan, we're getting a loan truck from the town of Poughkeepsie, which we're grateful for. We're pursuing other opportunities. But if we can move forward and get one of these, it's possible within the next four weeks, we could have a truck.
Which would be very helpful.
Yeah. And plow.
Fantastic.
So, but the first, the first, first part of that is to accept the claim from the insurance agency. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the claim from the insurance.
Second. Second, thank you, Brent. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for indulging in a sleight thing, but we needed to get moving. Okay. Comprehensive Plan Committee update.
So, I would like, we have, we have discussed more than once, the idea of creating a new Comprehensive Plan Committee to update our 1993 Comprehensive Plan Committee, Comprehensive Plan. Our, I have a draft resolution that I do not think is our final resolution, because I want to talk to you all about it. I shared it with you a few weeks ago. There's, you know, a couple of things going on, right? A, our comprehensive plan is almost 30 years old. It doesn't mention the words environment or climate change. It does talk a great deal about the importance of having housing for an aging population, as well as housing for all income levels, which is a problem that we still have. So although there are some things it does not mention, there are other things that it does that are still very relevant. That being said, I think it is best practices for any community to have a standing Comprehensive Plan Committee that is constantly evaluating what it is that we're doing as a community. And it guides not just building and planning and zoning, which is why I'm speaking, but it also guides who we are as a village and who we want to be, who we aspire to be. And so I think now is a good moment to start thinking about that. The nuts and bolts of this particular draft have a, have a Comprehensive Plan Committee that is anywhere from seven to, I would cap it at 11 members, because anything over 11 tends to get very unwieldy. I would like to have the committee be able to have as many subcommittees as it feels like it needs. I believe that some of those subcommittees could be committees that, a committee that focuses on how COVID is impacting who we are as a built, as a built village. I think, as heartbreaking as this is, I think COVID or some level of airborne illness is sort of here to stay for the moment. And I think, considering that a temporary problem is a mistake. And so there's COVID issues. We have in front of us a, well, not even in front of us, the state and the federal government have expanded the Rhinebeck Village Historic District. Rhinebeck Village has not expanded our Historic District overlay. And the reason why I have not brought that to our attention yet is because what the state and the federal government did was, they not only expanded the borders of the Historic District, but they also expanded the definition of what makes a historic building. And so this is not just something that we can do quickly. The Historic District's expansion is a question that we need to be very thoughtful about. So having a subcommittee there to think about that, I think, would be really important. And there's a few other sort of ideas that I have on how to use this Comprehensive Plan Committee to have members of the community engage with us on a regular basis. Obviously, we have our planning board, we have our zoning board, but we have a lot of people in this village who are very interested in, you know, who we are and how we develop, affordable housing, elder care, you know, there's all sorts of issues that we're facing. And so I would like the Comprehensive Plan Committee to be able to address all of them. In addition, to be able to have the flexibility of, I've been joking about it, but walking and chewing gum at the same time. We need to think about our future, but at the same time, there are some zoning issues that we have facing us immediately. And so, and as Branton knows, we feel like we just finished updating the zoning code, but it was five years ago. And, you know, these, these things are happening faster and faster and faster these days. So having a nimble committee that's able to address any concerns that we have on our zoning, any mistakes that we have made, any things that has sort of come to our attention, I think it's important that we have a group of people in the village who are thinking about this all the time. So that's, that's my brief presentation on the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
And this is also to avoid sort of the Big Bang Theory of Comprehensive Plans, that it seems like every 20 years, there's this huge effort that gets made.
And the minute that it's complete, it's out of date.
Right, and so this would be sort of continuous upgrades along, more responsive.
Exactly. And so, I mean, the idea behind this is like, yes, the overall thing, the overall plan at the moment needs to be updated. But then, you know, every year, we look at it again, and we say, are there any bits and pieces that have fallen that need to be updated anew? And so this isn't something that we do once every 20 years. It's something that we're constantly looking at and constantly thinking about.
I mean, the 1993 plan calls for itself to be.
Right.
Revised in parts also.
Yeah, exactly. We just never did it. So.
You make a motion to form a committee?
Um, yes, I would like, well, yeah, this isn't.
You want to come do it next?
Yeah, I mean, well, I, I don't want to do a motion to accept this, because I know that, right. So I would like to have a motion to form a permanent standing committee.
Correct.
To create, to create a permanent standing Comprehensive Plan Committee. And the votes strike back.
I second. Any discussion?
Who chooses the members?
Well, this is, this is all part of the fun, right? At the moment, it's drafted that we would choose the members. We would appoint a chair and.
They bring them forward and we appoint them.
Yeah.
The committee.
Yeah, and the chair would bring them forward and we would appoint them. And I'm, I'm, my goal is to have it be a very collaborative process with the five of us. I would be the one, probably ex officio, who would be sitting on the committee.
It has to have a village representative on it.
Right, so that would be me, unless you wanted to be someone else. But, so there's that idea. I mean, obviously, this would actually, part of this would disband the outdoor dining task force, because the idea behind that is, the needs of the outdoor dining task force would be addressed by a subcommittee or by the actual committee, COVID-related, la la la. So.
We're going to have a village residency requirement, I take it?
I would like to have a village residency requirement for the chair. And that's actually a question for us. Do we want village residency requirement for everyone on the committee or just for the chair?
Kind of.
Okay. Well, and then we could expand the subcommittees to towns as well, because, you know.
Well, but if there's, let's just say there's, yeah, let's talk about outdoor dining and there's restaurant owners who want to be part of that, who are not part of the village.
Right.
That, that would exempt them from being able to participate in the, if there's a business, let's just even not talk about outdoor dining, let's talk about businesses being represented as part of this, as part of this plan.
Say, you could say something like, at least so many, what percentage of subcommittees should represent village voters?
Should we wait until you have the final draft of this before we?
No, but I'm, I'm interested to like hear what you have to say. I mean, is.
We made a motion and second to form a committee.
Yeah, and now I can work on creating that committee.
The other thing is, you and I spoke about this, but informally, I want you to be the conduit for consultants, because.
Right, consultants and lawyers, because otherwise it gets out of control.
Yeah.
Yeah. I agree with you on that one. I've already started doing that, actually, with our zoning attorney.
Yeah, we should not have an open.
Yeah, no.
Parade to, to attorney fees that we have to pay for.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
One reason we'd be flustered about the residence requirement is because we do have a lot of people with good expertise around here.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, and I think we can either fill that with a subcommittee or, you know, with one or two members of the full committee. All right, cool.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You got your committee.
Yay!
Thank you, Lydia.
More to come, more to come.
A procedural question.
A lady in her committee.
So when do people get to vote on what was just, or talk about what was just discussed? Like, when do you say, does anyone have that concern about business owners and there being a significant number of non-residents being part of the.
So Diane, I believe there's a lot of detail that needs to be worked out. We've authorized the formation of committee, and I'm hoping that Trustee Slavy will put together that subcommittee and then start rolling out those details for us and for everybody so that we have a broader understanding in how to move forward. Today was the goal was, let's get this action started, let's approve a committee to get going.
All right.
Is that, you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay.
But it seems like there was already a draft resolution passed around.
It's not ready. It's not ready for us, it's not ready for the public.
Yeah.
In its similar vein, is that open for discussion to the public as to what Diane said about non-residents being on it? And is this different from the town?
Yes. Yes.
It is.
We are the village, they are the town.
Yeah.
Right, so is there going to be any discussion? Who's going to decide having non?
All good questions. Let's let Trustee Slavy work on the plan and bring it back.
And then I will bring it back, and then you all can tell me how it's wrong then.
In the meantime, feel free to reach out to Trustee.
All of your ideas.
All right, while you got the floor.
Yep.
Let you keep going.
Yep, so 6 Mulberry Street, otherwise known as the Father Bergen Center slash Buckley Schoolhouse. The current, the new owners gave us a very interesting presentation two meetings ago. And I spoke to David Miller, the Chair of the Planning Board, and the Board of Trustees and the Planning Board would like to have a joint meeting where we hear everybody's thoughts on what should be done with the Buckley Schoolhouse slash Father Bergen Center, whether or not they agree with the idea proposed by the current owners, whether they have ideas of their own. I am willing, personally, with permission, if you all agree, to expand that comment a little bit to, to issues that they touch on. One is higher density housing for elder care and potentially higher density housing for affordable housing. So those two ideas, which are currently not allowed in our residential zoning area, I do believe that is, you know, part of the conversation. So, and it wouldn't happen on a Tuesday night.
Or at a regular board.
Or at a regular board meeting, or at a regular planning board meeting. This would be a special sort of public comment session, so that the five members of the Planning Board and the five members of the Board of Trustees can hear what's going on, hear your thoughts. What do you all think about that?
It's a good idea.
Okay, great. Motion?
Well, I think you should, let's discuss a date.
Yeah.
And then we can motion on the date. Because then we can motion on holding the meeting on that date.
Yeah.
Martina, do you have the calendar? Do you know what states are open or not open?
Thursdays tend to be good.
Basically.
Okay.
Just so long as it's not a DBA meeting day, I believe is.
It's only once a month, so.
So what if, what if we hit it at five, just to get it going and?
And have it be sort of as long as we want it to be?
Probably two hours.
Five to seven?
As long as we would want it to be. No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, we could do it five to seven on a.
Prior to meeting?
I think it should be, I personally have a.
No, not prior to.
No, not prior to meeting, no, no.
Yeah, on a Thursday or something.
Yeah, we could do a five to seven on, you know, Thursday, the 28th, or Thursday, the 4th of November.
Is it 28th Thanksgiving?
Uh, the 20th of October.
Oh, 28th, I'm sorry.
That's right.
It's good.
Carrie, I'd like to ask the first.
Hang on one second. We're not, let's finish business.
Are the developer, is the, are the developers planning to be here or not with this meeting?
I mean, we could, I hadn't thought about that.
Yeah, so I don't know if that's.
I don't know if it's good or not. I'm trying to ask, I'm, because people may.
I, I mean, I don't want them there to present. If they want to come, it's a public meeting.
Yeah, they could get their three minutes, but.
Yeah, they can have their three minutes, but I don't think having them present, again, is a good use of anybody's time.
Okay.
Yeah. Can we record it?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Again, the board has to be willing to pay for the services, right? These. We, we, we love Panda. We love having Panda here, we love having him recorded. We pay for X amount per year. We've doubled our meetings already. for X amount per year. We've doubled our meetings already, we are in overdrive in terms of.
What we might be able to do is have our conversations somehow recorded by Zoom, and then have a, not people being able to comment by Zoom, but having people be able to watch by Zoom.
I'd rather pay Panda.
You'd rather pay Panda?
No, I mean, because this is going to attract a lot of questions.
Yeah.
Some people won't be able to show up, I think if it's on Panda, people can see it, I think it's well worth the investment, to my, to my, to my thinking.
No problem, and I think Panda's an important vehicle for us to use.
Okay.
And we've already passed that this, we will have in-person meetings when necessary.
Right, right.
We don't, we don't not, we do not have a vehicle for hybrid meetings.
We do not have a vehicle for hybrid meetings, we've been trying to figure out a vehicle for hybrid meetings.
And it's not going to happen tomorrow.
No. If Bart hasn't figured it out yet, then we haven't.
Right.
Does Thursday, November 4th work okay for people?
Thursday, November 4th works for me.
I don't see anything on our schedule.
Either one.
Okay.
I prefer the 4th, if possible.
Okay.
I think so.
You rule.
All right. I make a motion to have a joint, well, this is pending a little bit, the acceptance of the Planning Board, but I, I make a motion to extend an invitation to the Planning Board to have a joint Board of Trustees/Planning Board Public Comment Session on the evening of Thursday, November 4th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Do I have a second?
Second. Any other discussion?
There's some questions on the floor.
All in favor, say aye.
Great.
Five o'clock is an early time if you want the community's input.
Five to seven?
Five to seven.
Five to seven.
Right, so you're saying they can come in the middle of a meeting where they haven't heard anything for an hour or two, and have to make a comment while? Why can't you make it a seven o'clock meeting, why don't you do all your other board meetings? But this is an important topic, not just to me.
I'm fine with doing it later.
But there are other people who, earlier is better for.
There's also people with children, there's also people, you know, like, everybody sort of has needs, and, okay.
I mean, I think, I mean, Linda, I don't think.
Six to eight.
I mean, I think people can come in at any time and make their comments, that's okay.
Well, if it's a workshop, it's.
It's not a workshop, it's not a workshop, it's a public comment session, so we're listening to what the public has to say.
No, that's all.
Yeah, the public is participating by making comments, yes.
Yeah, and then once we have the public comment session, then we'll probably figure out a series of workshops to figure this out, but we want to hear from the public first.
Then people could, if they know about this, they can write in a question.
Totally, totally.
All right, so listen, timeout a second. I know that we, we have a lot of great issues here, and we could spend hours talking about a lot of things, but the board has made a motion and seconded and accepted, and we're moving forward. If you have a discern about that, please reach out to us, you know. I mean, our meetings, I love public comment, right, you know, but at some point, I'm going to keep the meeting going, so.
It is not a public hearing, it is a public comment. There's going to be 10 people sitting here, and you guys are going to talk to us.
Thank you, and this topic is 6 Mulberry or larger, you mentioned 200.
So, what 6 Mulberry Street is begging the question around is whether or not this village is comfortable with higher-density housing for either elder care, or affordable housing, or both, and I'm interested to hear what people have to say about that. Specifically with 6 Mulberry, and the plan that Maseh and David, you know, gave to us as an idea, and more generally, how we feel about that in the village.
6 Mulberry Street?
Yes.
It's specific to 6 Mulberry Street?
Yes.
It's not to talk about other developments, proposed developments, or anything like that? No, it's 6 Mulberry Street.
Oh, all right.
I don't, you opened up.
I know, I know, but I'm just curious, okay.
They make a comment about how they feel about elder care, but we're not going to be talking about a new development in.
Right.
In.
Somewhere else.
Somewhere else.
Right, okay. Right, Father Brogan, Buckley Schoolhouse.
All right, I'm going to move on. Community Development Block Grant.
We didn't vote yet.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Oh, thanks.
I thought we did, we had a vote, it was a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I thought we did.
Perfect, thank you.
I thought we did. Okay. Community Development Block Grants. These all come real quick, real fast. The county sends out a notice, and they sent out a notice a week ago on an opportunity for a Community Development Block Grant 2022. They give us a very short window to apply, and a very short window to pull everything together. So the board has been, thank you all for coming.
Thank you so much for your time.
Well, I wish you'd stay.
You could come back for marijuana in an hour.
That's all right. We're not giving it out.
Discussion.
Yeah, discussion of marijuana. Thank you for clarifying that, Brad.
Okay, Community Development Block Grant. We've done this before. The Community Development Block Grant has been set in place by the county, and they have a million dollars that are available for funding for this. The Community Development Block Grant is one of the most important things to remember, that it is a Community Development Block Grant, and therefore it requires input from the community to participate in this block grant. And we've been tossing around ideas, and to try to bring something forward for motion, we're glad to hear things, but we need to set a public hearing date on the Community Development Block Grant to move forward, okay? I will be very specific about what the board has been discussing as what is feasible for us to do, because the grant itself is geared towards those sections within municipalities that are geared towards either low, what is classified as lower-income housing, or inhibitors to people with disabilities, right? If you remember, two years ago, three years ago, we talked about a sidewalk on West Chestnut Street, because that was the area within the village that is deemed, you know, lower-income housing. So, we were not successful, we were very close to probably getting the grant, but we couldn't raise the additional money to be able to be successful and complete that on time. So that, that got tabled. Last year, there was none, this year, we're coming forward. So what the board has talked about, and what I proposed to the board, is that one of the things we can do is start eliminating inhibitors to people with disabilities, and replace our sidewalk curbs at intersections with sidewalk ramps, because we no longer, we have so many places within the village that do not allow wheelchair accessibility or handicap accessibility, because we do not have ramps on our sidewalks at these intersections, plain and simple. So one of the things we will be discussing at that night, that night, when we set a public hearing to this, is to approve or accept the possibility of going forward with that proposal. Time Bond is working on preparing a draft for us of how many ramps we could potentially do, because the grant is limited, as a single municipality, to $150,000, right, of what we can do. How many we could do for that? There are some suggestions to say, well, why don't we do a sidewalk with that? We know that a sidewalk, $150,000, won't get us very far.
Get half a sidewalk.
Yes, so it becomes impractical to really complete a project, you know, without a minimum money. So, we need to set, we need to set a public hearing, and I'd like to propose, at our next meeting, prior to the meeting, because we have till November 10th to get our letter of intent into the county, a public hearing to discuss the Community Development Block Grant and the proposal for curb ramps.
Okay.
So are you proposing we start it?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
What's the date and time?
Vanessa, well, all right, good question. October 26th, at our next meeting.
Okay.
Right. I would like to do it like this meeting, but not 5 o'clock, because I don't think it's going to take two hours, 6 o'clock. But what time is our regular board meeting? It's 6 o'clock.
So it's 6 o'clock.
So it is 5 o'clock. Or we can do, I'm going to rescind that, I'm going to take it back, let's include it in the board meeting, make it, start at 6.
Okay.
Idea.
6, yeah, we'll start at 6. Sorry for the back and forth.
No worries.
October 26th, 6 o'clock, Community Development Block Grant 2022, public hearing.
And, what's the match? Isn't there a match that we?
No, no, there is no match. It's $150,000.
Okay.
If we want to contribute more, we can contribute more to do that, but there is no requirement for a match.
Oh, great, okay.
And frequently, if there is, we try to do that with in-kind labor, like, say, preparation and stuff like that?
Yeah, I, I think this is a great idea, I love the idea of improving accessibility for folks in wheelchairs, and, and also, parents with strollers, and, I think, I think this would be more appealing to the grant reviewers than West Chestnut, actually.
Yeah.
So Brandy is looking at which intersections we should target for this?
She's going to do a survey, yes.
Okay, great.
Yep, and come up with a proposal. I don't have the wherewithal to do that. I can point to curb stops, curb ramps, but I can't. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. Okay, next, we have the honor of having a CFO that participates in a New York Class Governing Board, and our CFO, CFO slash Treasurer, Karen McLaughlin, has been in the past and is currently on, on the board for New York Class. She is up for reelection, but for her to be re-elected to that, we as the board have to nominate her to continue in that role, to, you know, to serve on New York Class. And for those who don't know, New York Class is one of our investments. We make an investment of your tax dollars into New York Class, which it returns revenue, and we've been able to exceed what we have been able to do by traditional investments, by using New York Class in the past. It is used all over the state, by municipalities, by schools, et cetera, and it's just been useful and helpful for us, the village board, to make those investments. And you can treat it like a bank account. You can put money in, draw money out, put money in, draw money out, which we do, all right, but we capitalize on our investment using New York Class. So I'd like to make a motion to nominate our Karen McLaughlin to the New York Class Governing Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Karen, do you want to say anything?
Thank you very much, it is a very good board. It has $3.5 billion in New York State funds, and it has all the other states. It's governed under public trust advisors out of Denver.
So it's not just New York public money?
Well, New York Class is, but they have a Michigan Class, a Texas Class.
Got it, got it.
So, I mean, prior to COVID, in our general fund, we were able to earn between $6,000 and $8,000 in one year, so as the interest rates, you know, as things get better, we're opposed to make more than we would normally.
Right. Is it divested out of fossil fuel? Is it divested out of fossil fuels?
I don't think so.
I'll talk to you about that later.
Guns and cigarettes.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Karen, thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Right now, it's mainly, the Treasury's right now. Thank you, thank you very much.
Super safe stuff, like you can't, it's like, not in the stock market, it's in Treasury.
All right, all right, Grant?
So this, this is quick with the water tank, this is just, we talked about burying the tank, and then I didn't want to spend twice, so I said I would look into whether we get a credit, and it took me a while to get, to hear from the guy from Botina. Yes, we will get a credit on the above-ground tank, and the gap might be $1,000 or $1,200, so, you know, we're all in to, to order the new tank and then bury it. I just wanted to make sure we weren't buying too. So, you need to sign it, Gary, and, oh, it's $5,120.54, so we should get substantial credit against this. As soon as you sign this, and I can fax it back to them, or email it back to them, there's a three and a half week lead time.
Okay, I believe that also, we're going to utilize our highway department, right?
Yeah, they did want to get, they want to get it done before the leave, so it'll be a little tight, but.
Right, so let's, I, you're making a motion to.
To approve this.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lydia. Any discussion?
Thank you, Brad.
All in favor, say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll sign it.
Great.
I gave the excavation detail to Scott and Carl, so they'll, one of them will probably do it.
12, 13?
Yes, 12.
Okay.
Thank you.
Turkey Trot. Uh, this is Fern Cliff Forest, uh, this is a traditional race that's held on Thanksgiving Day, Turkey Trot, it's a 5K race, in the organization Fern Cliff Forest, Inc., startup time is 6:00 a.m., start time is 8:00 a.m., event time, 11:00 a.m., and I think till the last runner comes through, right? Estimated attendance is 400 runners, and it takes place on Montgomery, goes out in Montgomery to Fern Cliff Forest, then comes back, okay? So it does require into the town, and liability, you know, for our police to service in the town, so our police force will be working this event, just like they worked the event this weekend. Everybody saw 1,400 runners running around the village, it was another, it was the fall marathon, and half, fall half marathon, that went off very successfully. So, I believe we can hold this. I'd like to make a motion to accept the Turkey Trot Race. Do I have a date here?
25th.
The 25th.
On the 25th, on Thanksgiving Day, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to make independent motions to approve our village board meetings as of 9/14/2021.
Second.
Any discussion? I believe Martina's been giving a few, is it, on this one or the other one, a few updates to make, correct? Just to notify, was this one the?
I sent a couple comments.
Oh, I've yet to see them, so I will make those updates.
So I just wanted to make note here, that officially, we need to recognize updates, because they are their, they are her records, right, and to accept comment updates, we need to approve and accept the comments that are made. And you have copied the board, right, and as long as the board is in agreement with those comments, we can move forward and accept, accept them. Okay, just for clarity, it is an official record when she creates it. So we have, do I make a motion, do I have a second?
Yeah, I seconded it, so is it, is it a motion as amended?
As amended.
Great.
Thank you.
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to make also a motion to approve the village board minutes of 9/28/2021 as amended and circulated to the board.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Karen, Treasurer's report, please.
Okay, the Treasurer's report is for the period ending September 30th. The tax collector's account ended the month with $1,128,667.13. The general fund ended the month with $36,351.53. The American Rescue Plan funds ended the month with $131,435.51. The water fund ended the month with $266,825.87, and the sewer fund ended the month with $592,629.59. Vouchers presented for payment, including prepaid's in the general fund. total $102,149.68. In the Water Fund, $49,297.6. In the Sewer Fund, $30,533.60. We just paid a bond payment for the police building in the amount of $59,000 and a lease, our lease purchase on the back truck of $41,396.76. Monthly operating statement is provided with the revenues and expenditures through October 12 through this meeting. Water and wastewater billing and adjustments, as signed off by Trustee Nunaker, are presented for authorization.
I'd like to make a motion to get the alterations of the water and wastewater bills approved as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Lydia. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I have, I have one budget amendment and it's to, it's to allocate the grant, police grant for $1,264, just to allocate that to the police salaries line item.
And a question, so this is because?
They received a grant and then it came in as a revenue and we allocate it to the expenses.
I'm sorry, I'm stuck. I think I make a motion to accept the amendment. Thank you, Rick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I have two more quick items. The Capitol, I request a transfer from the Capitol Fire Department to the general fund in the amount of $25,894.40. I'm requesting permission, I'm requesting authorization. However, that will not be transferred until the gear comes in. And it's for turnout gear for new members.
I'd like to make a motion to accept. We have, again, I would like to just make a brief comment to the public that I am pleased and I'm sure the board is pleased that we are receiving so many new members to our Village Fire Department. Within the last month, we've received six new members in the Fire Department. So this uniform, our turnout gear will go towards replenishing old and migrating and helping our new members. So I make a motion to accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and just one more item, just kind of going back to the historian purchase for 2006-50. The board already authorized the purchase, so I just would like the board to authorize a transfer from contingency to the historian line item as well as the corresponding budget amendment, just since the board already agreed on it.
I make a motion to accept the amendment. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Vanessa.
That's it, that's all we have.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, police report. Total number of incidents in the town is 24. Total number of incidents in the village, 117. Total number of tickets in the town is seven. Total number of tickets in the village, 17. Total arrests, zero. Total number of accidents, 11. I'd just like to note that the police also help us out a lot with our highway brush pickup and a commentary here when you see our highway crews out working and using their backhoes to pick up brush that, please be careful when proceeding around them. They are doing their best to look out for everybody. And on the main roads, our police give them that extra support, but on the side roads, they do not. So I'm asking for your cooperation as we are now heading into, again, another busy season with our leaf and brush pickup. And leaf brush, leaf pickup will continue from October 1st through December 1st. Thank you. Building, planning, and zoning.
Building, planning, and zoning this month, September, took in $10,734.90. I want to just make a comment. We are four months into the fiscal year and building, planning, and zoning has taken in over half of the amount of revenue that we budgeted for the year. And this speaks to the fact that they've also issued more than 150 building permits since the beginning of the year. And usually, in a year, we issue only about 100. So this is just to say that the Building, Planning, and Zoning Office is insanely busy. I ask for everybody's patience as we manage that. It is, so that's where we are. And just a small FYI reminder to everyone, we are in election season. We are in nonprofits raising money season. Signs are not allowed on municipal property. So election signs, event signs, whatever, the lawn sign things that are all in Lyons and the mini park and all of the rest of it, those are all going to be removed by the zoning enforcement officer over the course of the next week or so. And please, you know, don't waste your signs in municipal property because they're going to get thrown away.
Thank you.
Yep.
Rick?
Okay, Highway Department. The Highway Department has been, it's quite active as usual. They've been out delivering mulch. They've helped regulate the level of Crystal Lake when we have to drain it prior to some of the dramatic rain events we have, we've had. They've been doing the ongoing brush pickup, mowing the parks. They've been repairing internally what equipment they can. Installed some new signs on Livingston Street. And we do want to make a real point that please do not mix leaf, leaves and brush. And the reason why is we have a wonderful vacuum truck, but it only picks up leaves. So we can go by, pick up the leaves. The brush, the other stuff needs to be picked up with a backhoe. So please segregate your leaf pile and your brush pile. Keep the brush to under a four-foot length. And please don't use either pile as a place for garbage disposal because we do compost all of this stuff. And if there's waste in it, it ruins our compost and it can also mess up the back truck. So again, leaves, brush, separate, no waste. Thank you.
Do you want to talk about paving?
Sure. You sure you can talk about paving?
Okay. In addition to what Trustee Lewitt talked about, we've been working diligently to secure a vendor, a contractor, to pave a lot of the bad sections of the road that were earlier marked in green paint or white paint or whatever that we had contracted out. We did this in May, we contracted it out, and we kept getting numerous reasons why it could not be done. It was weather, it was not available, it was, I'm too busy, it's too dark, it's too light, I'm not sure. And so it's been a struggle. It's been a struggle this year to get paving contractors. I don't know where they're going or what they're doing, but they are all very, very busy, apparently. And we don't seem to be, haven't been successful at getting contractors in. So our Highway Department is doing its best to make up for that loss of what we've been committed many times to by many, several contractors to do, to pave these bad spots on the road and make them usable before bad weather sets in or the, any of the blacktop plants close down. So I, again, I think we're always asking for your support, your help, your patience as we try to work through this issue with securing a contractor and/or doing it ourselves to maintain our village roads. They are, they're important to us, they're important to all of you. We want to make them safe. We don't want anybody to hurt or get or fall. But it has been a struggle this year to get our roads decently paved and puddles secured. So again, I ask for your patience as we work through that.
We had, like, it was fine to contract the big jobs.
It's the little jobs that have been hard, hard to get somebody to cover.
Yep. Okay, Water Department.
So I have a bunch of items here. Regular maintenance, a couple of water leaks in Reincliffe, normal mowing, et cetera. We, as far as the water line, or the water plant upgrade project, Delaware Engineering is faced with a deadline of November 22, which we will meet. We're going to meet that deadline to get that in for the, we have application for the grant request. And I noticed Karen was working on it today. So we're scrambling to do that and get it done. And meanwhile, I think Gary and I are going to try to meet with some local officials and get some letters of support and things like that.
As part of a road show.
Yeah. Delaware Engineer responded to Dutchess County Water and Waste, no. Dutchess County Water and Wastewater, yes. Delaware responded to Dutchess, just Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority's comments on that engineering report. So it's with Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. The, we've noticed that the, we have heard that the EPA is going to require a lead service line inventory. So we're going to have about three years to recall when we are analyzing what everyone's service line was made out of on Livingston, Chestnut, Platt. We're going to have to do that for the entire distribution system. So in search of lead service lines. So I think if you have galvanized, you'll be okay. We're going to have three years to do this, but it's probably a situation where our normal guys can't take this on because it's going to be a big project.
How do you do that?
You really check at the water meter going into the house and whatever that material is, is what your service line is basically going to be. So we had, we did find one lead service line in that huge project we did.
Wow.
And we don't, we never test high for lead when we do the samples because we have to do tap samples and things. So that's just, I'd like to approach either Delaware, they told me about this, or, you know, Ty &amp; Bond. I think maybe a good idea would be for them to get an intern, you know, an intern one summer and then they'd learn an awful lot, you know, about how this stuff works.
Could this be part of the mapping project, right? Or this is another element that they could enter into the?
Well, it's going to be going by, yeah, I mean, you would want to know.
Could be.
Yeah.
What the composition of the service line is.
This is something you're going to need bids on? How much are you talking about to have it done? I mean?
I have no idea. And I also don't know if there's going to be government, federal, you know, monies available to support it.
Have to write a spec for it and bid it out?
It'd be interesting, I mean, if we can get an intern to do it, then it's just the cost of water testing, right?
No, it's inspection.
You just inspect everyone's basement, like, everybody.
You take a look.
You probably could do a paper search for the newer apartment and condominium developments. You just know that they're in the building department 25, 30 years ago and then everyone had copper lines or what, so then you're done with those. But, and we've also done, you know, Chestnut, Livingston, Platt, Montgomery.
So these are the lines that go from the water mains into, into the properties?
Yeah.
All of the water mains, though, we know aren't lead?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think, as far as writing the scope, I think if we just, if, for example, if we use Ty &amp; Bond, we don't need to, we've already decided that they're our village engineer, so.
We could task them.
Task them to do it.
Yeah. And you get a quote from them, though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's a really big project, we could get a quote from Ty &amp; Bond and from Delaware Engineering and sort of see where we land on that.
Yeah, I like the idea of getting an intern, too, because.
It's a person on the.
Because maybe they get the labor for free.
Yeah.
So I, I'll pursue this. We have three years to pull this off, so.
Right.
Grassmere Soho House is back on, so we're going to bring some stuff for you guys to look at so you get reacquainted with the project. And now we had negotiated that water agreement to fruition, pretty much. So we still have that draft out there. Rich approved it, their attorney approved. I think they have a new attorney now, but, so I'll be bringing that stuff to you in the next two meetings.
And, and they're still looking to treat wastewater on site?
Yeah, they're going to do it themselves.
Okay, so they're just coming at us for drinking water?
Just drinking water.
But this is something we, as the Village Board, have said we would participate in the town board planning discussions. So we understood what was going on because it is a big project and it has a lot of impact on the Village of Rhinebeck. So I forget what the term was. We were the, or not, we weren't the lead, we were.
We're an interested party.
An interested party, is that what it is?
Yeah.
So.
So that.
You and Paul were participating before.
Yeah, and now they've said that the project's going to be the way it was when we approved Seeker in 2015. It's going back to that original kind of scope.
2015? Wow.
This has been on the, been kicked around for a long time.
So I guess we should be updated again on what it is, because I don't remember, I wasn't.
Yeah, so I'm going to bring that in, you know, like the sketch and the description.
Also, just to that end, the planning board has, two members of the planning board is now meeting with two members of the town planning board once every four to six weeks, just to sort of stay in communication. So, you know, that's not.
They're going to do some substantial water upgrades for us. So in, in exchange for us giving them, you know, good, good rates on the water, which is 125% of what our normal, 1.25x what our normal in-village customers are paying, so.
Should we, we're having, we're having that whole rate analysis done? I mean, is this going to be 1.25?
It's pretty much, that would be, you know, that'll some if we tried to change that now, after.
Yeah, after.
Yeah, because they're doing a lot of water lines and they have to go all the way back to, well, basically, that street, Nolan and that street that, we talked about the 30 mile per hour, Arnett. I go by there on a day, so, yeah, but.
But we, that brings a good point, that we should let the guy who's doing the.
Yeah, they, yeah, we're.
No, and I think Ty &amp; Bond knows, because they were involved in these discussions.
I've already talked to them about it.
Oh.
Because I had a conference call with.
Good.
With their rate guy.
So he, because that's due, that's coming forward in mid-November, the rate analysis.
Okay, so that's it for water. Wastewater.
It's a lot.
Where's Ty &amp; Bond at with that, with the mapping project?
The rate analysis?
No, not the rate.
The mapping.
Oh, I don't know. We could get an update.
Just curious.
With wastewater, Road Brothers is out there again. Now they're working on the roof, so they should, you know, substant, I would think they would substantially complete it this week. I have not been able to get out there. It's supposed to take three days to do the roof for the greenhouse. Matthews repaired the sweep arm on the clarifier. I mean, these guys are so handy and intelligent, it's unbelievable. And it's really improved the clarifier's productivity now. So we'll see an invoice on that. That, the sand filters, the Eman's pump was replaced. We had approved that before. And we did get a quote from Briggs Paving. Not to rub it in, but we did get a.
Page shut up, Evan.
You want to know how much we paid for that quote?
Yeah, I know, this is, this is not a discount. But Gary and I approved this because it was a sole source. It was the only person who responded. Brian Bacamo got, tried to get five quotes. So Gary and I had approved this invoice for $6,750. I don't know if we should ask everyone else to approve it also or it's for Briggs Paving to do the trench over by the Amsterdam.
Ask if anybody objects?
Yeah, does anyone object?
It doesn't hurt to have, it doesn't hurt to have the.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a resolution that we get this paving quote from Briggs for $6,750.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that's.
And this is, I'd like, I should, everybody clarification. This paving is for, in the, where the Frontier Bank is between, on Route 9 in the Frontier Lots, where we dug up the wastewater line a year ago and we are really under contract to return it to in-kind.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So it was on private property.
Yeah, we had an easement, but we had to restore it. So the last thing is about the sludge removal. The, Feolia is only going to do it through November 30. So we got a letter from them saying that they're not going to do it much longer. And I've been, they gave me a contact at Sinagro, who's in Woodbury, Connecticut. And I talked to Martina and we decided we didn't have enough time to go out for a bid on this and get a response and then get them going, you know, because it's, you know, it's the middle of October already. So I spoke to a contact at Sinagro and they will give us an interim deal. They're getting, she'll give me a price. Prices have skyrocketed with this. There's cartage issues, there's issues with incinerators, there's issues with new contaminants being identified. being identified. So it's, it's a new, you know, world out there. So just beware that we're going to start paying, you know, maybe a third more for, for the sludge disposal. But I'll bring...
What's our 42 tons, is it 42 tons a year? Is that something like that that we process?
About 40 grand a year, I think.
Sort of speaks to your composting idea of Vanessa.
So we should, I mentioned this to a woman, you know, she's like, yeah, that's, people are starting to think of solutions here because...
Yeah.
Our, does our current poller work with other municipalities? Is there a chance we can band together with any other municipalities?
It's sort of how it works already. We're like trying, we're going to kind of piggyback, I think, on this Woodbury plant. I, it's really complicated.
Gotcha.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, it was, I think we pay, Brian said we paid about $120 a ton or something. Now it might go up. She was throwing prices around at like 150, 160 percent.
So you'll bring the price out, you're, you're going to bring a quote?
Yeah, we're going to, and then we'll go out to bid.
So we'll do a six month or a year or something, then we'll, we'll recontract.
Yeah. We might have one-page agreement, you know, for a month-to-month deal.
Given that price, maybe we can work on composting.
Right. Or Trimuni, do they want to take any, anybody else's sludge?
I'll talk to them now, see, I, this is, this is pretty new. This just came up a couple of weeks ago that, that they're doing that, but I'll see if they're open, you know, if they can take outside sludge.
Yeah.
So that's it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
All right, environmental. So I wanted to thank a village resident, Angela Basili, and her son Sam. They organized for our Climate Smart Task Force, a whole pro-bikeability, walkability effort in the village this September. Really inspired by Sam, who's been walking a mile to school and back every day with his mom and his brother, and seeing just lines of cars, parents chauffeuring their kids to the schools. And he was really dismayed because of pollution and the contribution to climate change. So they organized, and they got close to 50 people to sign a pledge to go car-free or car-light on September 22nd. And they organized a whole walk or bike to school day event. They had tons of kids and parents show up and they were decked out in these neon yellow t-shirts and we all walked and biked and scooted to school together. And a big shout out to Superintendent Albert Cousins and in particular, Principal of Chancellor Livingston School, Principal King, who were very supportive. And the teachers kind of welcomed the kids into, into the school on that day. So I know Angela has also submitted a letter to the board for public comment. She really would like to see the board consider more projects to make biking safe, in particular for students trying to get to school, biking or walking. So, you know, how I feel about this?
Subcommittee.
Comprehensive Plan Subcommittee?
Funding, funding committee. Funding committee.
Exactly. So please take a look at her letter, it's really wonderful. Speaking of engaging with the community, our Climate Smart Task Force will also be at the October 23rd Discovery Festival at the high school. So this is kind of like a big science and learning festival, and we'll be doing a demonstration and talking to people about composting and why composting is good for the environment, builds the soil, but also sequesters carbon rather than releasing methane when food rots in landfill. So come and talk to us and learn about it, spread the word. Our feasibility study for composting, we're waiting for the final draft from our, our Rochester Institute of Technology partners, and I will definitely be sharing more with you when I get that. An update on the Flex Tech study for Village Hall in the cloud, you'll see there's an updated package from ME Engineering. They'll be doing a Level 2 study, which gets us some more details about our options for energy efficiency replacements and ideas. So that's exciting, and they'll be submitting that for the Flex Tech matching grant. As you know, last meeting, we passed a ban for spraying glyphosate on municipally-owned properties. And as promised, I did put together a public service announcement for, for private property owners, trying to encourage them to stop using glyphosate, aka Roundup. And I wanted to submit that to the board. If you have any comments or edits, let me know. I'd like to make a bunch of copies and, and start getting those out into the public's Also, shout out to our high schooler, who's a member of our Climate Smart Task Force, Scout Pronto. She led a bio blitz and she had over 150 submissions via an app where people in the community were taking pictures of any plant, insect, creature that they found in an effort to track our biodiversity here in Reinbeck. And Scout and her sister Lulu, by the way, were named one of Vegetarian Times Magazine's 20 Under 20 Climate Activists, so.
She's really something.
Quite something. And the natural resources inventory project continues, as does our collaboration with our Marist students who are, we're getting close to getting them basically the technical hookup they need to get the data from the sensor in the Landsman Kill up into the cloud. And then the computer science students will be able to create a dashboard to visualize that data and to help push out alerts when there might be flooding upstream that will affect the Crystal Lake levels in the Asher Dam.
Love it.
So lots going on. Yeah, as usual, if anybody has any questions for me, check out climatesmartreinbeck.org or feel free to reach out to me if there's any climate-related issues you're interested in.
Just like, thank you, Vanessa. I think you recently just upgraded our website page with all the action items that we're going, that they've been working on to get us to Silver.
Yes.
It's impressive. If you think about, but there's four communities in the state that have Silver today and that we're really leading here to get, to get to that point, so thank you.
You're welcome. It's, it's a lot. So thanks for your patience while I talk about all of it.
Great.
Tree committee.
Okay, I'd like to lead off with some good news. I think at the last meeting we discussed the tree commission applied for a $1,000 grant from the New York State Urban Forestry Council, and I'm happy to report that we have won that grant for $1,000.
For our adolescent holly trees?
For our adolescent holly trees, that's right. So we'll be planting two trees over at the, over at Legion Park. Basically, they will help screen people in the park from Route 9. These are two very wonderful, special trees. They're evergreens, they're hollies, they have berries, so they are, they feed wildlife, they feed birds, they're shelter, they're green, they're very attractive, very attractive trees. We expect to take delivery of at least one, actually this Friday, the Highway Department will be out digging a hole this week, and then we have a group of volunteers who are actually going to do the planting on Saturday. So it was a great work from Meg Crawford, put together the grant. We were able to bang it right out and it was really a nice, nice thing. We will be doing some level of formal presentation, so I'm going to invite the board, we'll get a date. Also, a thank you to the Frost Foundation, so I'd like you guys to attend.
What time?
Not, not...
Saturday.
No, no, not this Saturday. Saturday's the planting.
I know, what time on Saturday? You want help, right?
No, 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 we'll, we'll...
Oh, I thought you said you were asking for help on Saturday. Sorry.
No, no.
You got help?
I'm going to come with a shovel, man.
Yeah, well, the reason why we're not putting that out is that we are also planning for the annual tree planting. And the way this is done now is that we basically have COVID pods, so that people are masked and work in groups that are known. So it used to be, and hopefully returned to the fact, that this was basically an open call for residents to come and help assist and learn how to plant trees in the village, and it was really a lot of fun, but because of COVID protocols, we've had to limit down the groups and have basically just a select group of people so that we can keep track COVID-wise of what's going on. So I would not put out an open call on for, for, for Saturday. The other thing is, so I want to say that the community is planning to plant 19 trees, 19 trees at 14 sites. That will be coming up on, let's see, I got the correct date here, on November 6th. So you may see volunteers out planting trees. And again, the tree commission, 20 years, 15 to 20 trees each season, 400-plus trees probably planted in the village of Reinbeck through its, its existence. It really contributes a lot to our urban landscape. So when you see folks out, we'll have our nice commission t-shirts on, say thank you. This is really something people do for the long-term commitment. Hopefully those trees will be there for decades, decades to come. Last thing, I do, want to have one action item. The board, excuse me, the commission received a request for removal of a tree at 21 South Street. So there was a bit of a time crunch. So the board, excuse me, the commission has approved this pending the receipt of the application at the clerk's office.
They have the receipt, or they have the application.
They have the application, okay, so that's been in. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the commission's...
This is another port tree that's been killed by the electric lines?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay.
No.
So long as a ribbon on it, on the corner, right?
Yeah, actually, yeah. So this is for 21 South Street, the commission recommends removal of a Norway maple near the corner of Center Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Thank you, Lydia. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll, I'll just add one last, I think that the commissioners also have been attending a Cornell Cooperative Extension Program on tree education, both planting, pruning, maintenance. So there's a fair amount of ongoing continuing education that gets done, and the commission is highly involved in all of that.
Great, cool. Can I talk about the oak tree, on Oak Street?
If you want. I was not there for the removal.
All right. At the last board meeting, we approved the removal of a 200-year-old oak tree on Oak Street. I would just like to thank the community for the outpouring love for this tree that showed up and were handed samples by the contractor removing the tree, and it really was very rotted. As you, if you had a chance to witness, the bottom section of the tree, as described by the arborist, the inside of the tree was ant-infested and rotted away, and that tree was in a dangerous state. So our Highway Department is continuing to work on removing the stump and repairing the surface area, so there's still a lot of work going on up there on that tree. So thank you for everybody who showed love and support. Susan?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think a couple of years ago, there was some trepidity with our watering the day during the tree planting because we use the water from the hydrants, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, we haven't used the water from the hydrants since then.
Okay, um, just if you're going to be doing something with the hydrants, can you just put that out to the community, that, you know, on the tree planting day, just...
We don't, we don't, we're not using, we're not using...
No, you're not using it?
Correct.
We are flushing the hydrants and we did put out...
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
A couple of years ago, there was something with the...
Yeah, we now, what we do is we ask homeowners for, to use, we use spigots from homeowners' properties.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. I'd also like to, at the end of every meeting, you know, recognize those people who have worked for the village for, for a while. This month, I'd like to recognize our water plant operator, Alan Bateman, who, believe it or not, has been here three years already. So congratulations, Alan, for the work that you do. And our Highway MEO, Dante Knox, two years with, with our Highway Department. These guys are great, they do a great service for the village, and thank you for your service. So with that, all correspondences on file at the clerk's office, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Just a reminder, the, at 7:00 sharp, we will be starting the public hearing for our marijuana legislation to opt out of dispensaries and lounges. See you then.